We'll call to order the meeting of Tuesday, February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Alonzo Jefferson this morning will be leading us in the invocation followed by the pledge. Would you all rise, please?
Thank you, Chair. If you can just stand and bow your heads. Dear merciful and heavenly Father, we come before you with bowed heads and humble hearts. Today Almighty, we give you thanks to you for all your blessings and continued comfort in our lives. As we hold these proceedings today, we ask that you bless our leaders and guide them in their decisions that will benefit all the residents of Saint Lucy County. We ask that you continue to look over our first responders and protect those in need. We continue to ask for your everlasting love. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
At this time, I'd welcome the public to any public comment which are not public hearing items. Would anyone from the public like to talk? Seeing none? Okay. Good morning.
Hi, good morning.
And please identify yourself. Thank you.
Yes, good morning, everyone. I'm Delia Camacho, Client and Business Relations Manager for Ashbrit. This morning, on behalf of the Ashbrit team, I wanted to thank the commissioning body, the Commissioner, the county leadership, and the county staff for the opportunity to continue serving as your debris contractor. We've, Ashbrit, we've been working with the county for, since two thousand and one, and we've had the great privilege of working with the county's best through numerous storms to include Hurricane Francis, Hurricane Jean in two thousand four, Hurricane Wilma in two thousand eight, Irma in twenty seventeen, and also that Red Tide event cleanup, the emergency cleanup in twenty eighteen. Needless to say, we are very honored to continue being your contractor. We're specifically honored to work with such a great team, the Solidway staff. You know, it's been, it's been a wonderful pairing. Also, you know, we are, we've made your home our home, you know, throughout these years working together and through the Ashbrit Foundation, we've been proud supporters of the Boys and Girls Club annual chili cook-off event. In addition to that, we've also added numerous value-added services to help prepare for a storm, to include education outreach materials and also marketing campaigns. So needless to say, we're very honored to be your contractor once again, and we look forward to the opportunity to continue strengthening and building our relationship. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
Yes.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Castillo, I'm the CEO of Ashbrit. And again, I want to reiterate what Delia said, it's an honor to be part of Saint Lucy County and serve the county. I hope you never need to see us after this commission meeting, but obviously, given our location in Florida, it's prudent, the great work your team does to ensure that the county and its residents are ready. Initially, I, I came for two reasons. One, to reiterate from the leadership and ownership of our company, our commitment to serve the county and to be here always when called and when needed. There was also a question on the procurement, but your procurement staff through the procurement channels were able to address that already this morning. So really, it's a thank you for having us. We were really honored of the multiple, you know, competitive market to be scored first in all non-cost factors and then as an average be scored as one of your top companies. So bringing that expertise of our company to serve Saint Lucy County, as Delia said, be part of the community, ensure all local companies are going to work is really important. So thank you very much, and we look forward to working with the county.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on non-public addressed items? Seeing none, I'll look for approval of the B O C C regular meeting of January twenty-fifth, the informal meeting of January twenty-fifth, and the regular meeting of February first, two thousand twenty-two.
So moved.
Second, we have a motion by Commissioner Bartz, Commissioner, second by Commissioner Zdowski. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approves. This morning, we have a proclamation for the American Heart Association, and is there a Coletta Scott in the audience? Coletta, would you meet me over by the podium there and, Madam Secretary?
A resolution proclaiming the month of February twenty-twenty-two as American Heart Month in Saint Lucy County, Florida, where as the Board of County Commissioners of Saint Lucy County, Florida, has made the following determinations. The American Heart Association has stated that heart disease, including coronary heart disease, hypertension, and stroke, continues to be the number one cause of death for men and women in the United States. The American Heart Association also states that coronary heart disease counts for one in four deaths in the United States annually, killing over six hundred and fifty-nine thousand people per year. The Florida Department of Health reported that in two thousand twenty, heart disease was the leading cause of death in Florida and accounts for over twenty-one percent of all deaths. According to the Florida Department of Health Bureau of Vital Statistics during two thousand twenty, Saint Lucy County ranked forty-nine out of sixty-seven counties with the highest heart disease mortality rate. Risk factors for heart disease include high blood pressure, high cholesterol, prediabetes, diabetes, smoking, secondhand smoke exposure, tobacco use, physical inactivity, poor nutrition, and obesity. The Center for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, states that heart disease and the conditions that lead to it can happen at any age. High rates of obesity and high blood pressure among younger people ages thirty-five to sixty-four are putting them at risk for heart disease in earlier life. People can take action to protect their heart health and prevent heart disease by taking steps to prevent and control the risk factors for disease, making healthier choices, being more active, and managing their health conditions. Keeping our community's residents healthy and promoting awareness of important health issues, including heart disease, is an important responsibility and depends on the actions of many organizations and groups in our community. Now therefore, be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Saint Lucy County, Florida. This board does hereby proclaim the month of February two thousand twenty-two as Heart, American Heart Month in Saint Lucy County, Florida, to raise awareness of heart disease. This board further encourages all citizens to observe this important month by participating in the appropriate ceremonies throughout Saint Lucy County, passed and duly adopted this fifteenth day of February two thousand twenty-two.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Bartz. All those in favor?
Aye.
First of all, we'll turn around, we'll get a picture, and then I'll let you both speak, please. And with Coletta is Clint Spurber, and congratulations.
Well, thank you all. I'll start out and happy to be here and it's not on COVID, so thank you all very much. So we, we do want to take this opportunity to thank you again for the proclamation and also share a few local statistics about heart disease and discuss a few of the projects that we have dealing with it. So in two thousand twenty, we conducted a community health assessment and found that heart disease was the second leading cause of death in Saint Lucy County, second to cancer. Compared to women, sixty-five percent more men in Saint Lucy County die from heart disease. When you look at it, age-adjusted hundred thousand, rate per hundred thousand of hospitalizations from coronary heart disease, blacks were slightly higher compared to whites. And then also compared to whites, thirty percent more blacks in Saint Lucy County died to heart disease. So when we talk about sudden cardiac arrest, it is a life-threatening emergency that occurs suddenly when the heart stops breathing. It strikes people of all ages who tend to be healthy as well, including children and teens. Many parents don't realize that it is also the number one killer of student athletes and the leading cause of death on school campuses. One in three hundred youth has an undetected heart condition that puts them at risk. In fact, an estimated seven thousand to twenty-three thousand people are stricken annually. Now, I know some of you or all of you are actually very familiar with the Jessica Clinton heart screening that we do annually, the Health Department, and unfortunately, we weren't able to do it the last couple of years, but I definitely plan on doing it this year. Now I will turn it over to Coletta Scott to discuss a few of the other programs that we have.
Thank you. Thank you, Clint. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Coletta Scott. I am the Health Equity Liaison with the Florida Department of Health in Saint Lucy, and we're implementing three programs in our improvement plan to focus on reducing adult obesity. Eating Smart, Being Active, the National Diabetes Prevention Program, and the Billion Steps Challenge. Our Eating Smart, Being Active program, it's a nine-week program for SNAP recipients, and it focuses on how to shop and cook healthy food on a budget. Each session has a food demonstration and an opportunity to practice physical activity. To date, we've implemented this program with the school district, IRSC, and San Juan Diego Catholic Church. I've done this class, and those, they are really on a budget, and they're very tasty, those recipes. Our National Diabetes Prevention Program is an evidence-based intervention for reducing type-two diabetes. Weight loss through healthy eating and physical activity is the goal of this year-long program. The first class was launched in November. I am the facilitator of that program, and it's going so awesome. And plans are underway to launch more in the coming months through an online program called HALT, which will allow participants to, the ability to complete weekly modules at their own pace rather than at a specific time, date, and place. And finally, our Billion Steps Challenge, I'm sure you're all familiar with that, it's our annual community-wide physical activity campaign, which encourages residents to simply move more. Plans are to expand the reach of this program this year in schools, businesses, and within community organizations. And to address the disparities in heart disease found in our health assessment, Health Equity was selected as one of our four priority areas in our two thousand twenty-one through two thousand twenty-six CHIP plan, and our strategies include involving community, community members impacted by those health disparities and the development and implementation of the actions to improve them, specifically by recruiting health champions. I think I'm a health champion, and that way, we can engage neighbor-to-neighbor on various health topics that affect our community, partnering with grassroots organizations to help promote and advance the work, as well as recruiting social media champions that have, that can reach the targeted audience where those disparities exist. Last year, our office received state funding to develop a health equity plan and expand work on addressing those disparities. A health equity task force and coalition has been established to oversee the plan development. We look forward to partnering with you in the coming months on the development of that plan and other health, excuse me, other healthy Saint Lucy Coalition initiatives. That way, we can promote health where we live, work, and play. Thank you.
And at this time, I'd, I'd like to ask Mr. Doug Davis to come up. We're going to be giving, I have a unique privilege to give him a certificate of recognition. And the recognition reads, "Certificate of Recognition, Saint Lucy is pleased to recognize Doug Davis. Doug Davis has retired from his position as Chairman of the Contractors Examining Board of Saint Lucy County. He efficiently, competently, and untiringly served this board and in turn, the citizens of Saint Lucy County for the past twenty-four years. Saint Lucy County expresses their sheer appreciation, gratitude for Doug's faithful and dedicated service to the Contractors Examining Board of Saint Lucy County dated this February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two." And as a point of personal privilege, I, I sat on that board with Doug for eight years, and he's a shining example of what's right in our community. He's done so much for nonprofits. The first thing I think of is Grace Way Village, all the work you're doing there, Doug, and from the bottom of my heart and from all the other Commissioners, thank you so very much. Would you like to say a few words, though? Sure. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you. I keep it brief. Twenty-four years, wow. It's come and gone. They asked me if I would continue to serve, and I said no this year. For the first time, I continue to say yes because I love it. I love my profession. Construction is my passion, and the issues that this board takes up was just right in my will-well, so I couldn't have enjoyed it more. The other part that I'd say is I've really, really enjoyed the relationships that I've developed over the years. You know, of course, Sean is one, but there's been many, you know, like the John Langels of this community, and the Fred Rohrbars, and the Charlie James, and the Art Allens, and, and on and on and on. Staff, I've, I've worked with, I don't know how many, probably half a dozen billing department officials over that period of time. Great relationships, great people. This community is blessed with the people that will stand up and serve, and I'm proud to have been a part of that. So thank you for giving me that opportunity over the years. I thank you very much for the recognition today. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have one more presentation, and that's from the clerk and controller, Michelle Miller, regarding the Wells Fargo credit card revenue sharing.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I'm pleased to be with you today to present this year's credit card rebate reimbursement check. This program generates revenue, allowing the clerk's office to earn cash back rewards when the county vendors are paid by credit card rather than going through the process of cutting a check. This year, I am pleased to announce that in two thousand twenty-one, the credit card reimbursement program generated one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars and fifty cents. So I'd like to give a huge thank you to the dedicated professionals. You guys, please stand up. Our clerk finance team for their diligent work year-round, ensuring that the credit card reimbursement program continues to generate funds for the hard-working citizens of Saint Lucy County. So could I get a picture with you guys?
Absolutely.
All right.
You want to bring it up here?
Yeah.
Okay. Linda Franny. See that? There you go. Perfect. To the left, to the left.
Some of you all got to come down that side. Thank you, Clark Miller.
One more. Thank you, Clark Miller. Okay, we're moving along to the consent agenda. Before we approve or pull anything, I'd just like to mention that eight K four Prima Vista is funded by the infrastructure sales tax, and eight K five is the West Midway Guardrail and paving, and that is also from the infrastructure sales tax. Does anyone like to pull anything for discussion?
With approval.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Townsend and one second by Commissioner Hutchinson. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion approves. Okay, moving right along. We have a Planning and Development Services, and, good morning.
Good morning. We have a item for the P and L. They're doing a rezoning for Conservation Public, and our staff is asking this item to be continued to the March first meeting.
Okay, is that, is that okay with everyone? So moved.
Well, you have to open and close it because it was a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to discuss this? Anyone from the public? Seeing none, we'll close public hearing. Motion for approved to postpone.
Who made the motion?
Huh?
Did you make the move, Chris? Easy made the motion to continue. We seconded.
To March sixth at six PM or soon thereafter can be heard.
March first.
March first.
And who seconded?
Nine AM or soon thereafter.
And Commissioner Bart.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioners Zdowski.
Six o'clock, gee.
At six PM on March first and a second by Commissioner Bart. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Thank you so very much.
She got it, that's why.
We also have a, this is also a public hearing, and this is on Public Works Culvert Final Assessment Resolution. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, for the record, Barbara Getler, MSBU Coordinator. In February two thousand twenty-one, the board established a voluntary program, giving eligible property owners the choice to apply for funding to replace failed driveway culverts and then repay this funding through the non-ad valorem special assessment against the improved property collected in annual installments on the tax roll. In January two thousand twenty-two, the board approved resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash oh eight and initial assessment resolution. Today's resolution, two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-five, is the final assessment resolution as required by county ordinance. The purpose of this resolution relates to the imposition and collection of special assessments to fund stormwater culvert improvements within the culvert two thousand twenty-two twenty-oh-one MSBU, determine that real property therein will especially benefit, establish the method of assessing the cost of improvements, ratify and confirm the initial assessment resolution, and approve the assessment role. Staff recommends board approval of resolution two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-five and authorization for the chair to sign documents as approved by the county attorney.
Any questions for Ms. Getler?
Mr. Chair, I have one question, and Barb, I'm not sure if you're the one to answer it or not, but I know we are, as we're moving forward and cleaning out a lot of our swells right now, are we putting notice out prior to doing that to the neighbors that are being affected to this program?
I believe we do use door hangers, but I'll.
For this, that this, the availability of this project are out there. I know.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Lapert, Work Quality. Yes, to answer your question, we are doing proactive advertising of, of our work coming in. We do that in two ways. We, we have a door hanger program where we physically will walk around and put little hangers, letting people know we're coming in. But then we've really been successful this year in, in proving that. We actually use the flash signs when we have big neighborhoods, so as people pull in their neighborhoods, they see it as they come in. And we actually paid to have some actual signs with posts go in at corners of big neighborhoods, so we're really working hard to advertise that full-time.
And that's to advertise the work or to advertise a program such as the culvert?
No, to advertise that we're coming into your neighborhood to do swell work.
Okay, I'm looking for, are we putting the word out about the program?
Once, once they determine that the culverts have failed, that's when they get the packet of information on this program.
I apologize, yes. So we come in after the contractors go in, dig the swales, we come in post, inspect the culverts, and then send them the packet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you both, both very much. Staff recommends approving this resolution.
Public, open.
Public hearing. Would anyone like to discuss this item? Seeing none, we'll close public hearing.
With approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Townsend, second by Commissioner Bartz. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion approves. Motion carries. Moving on to the irregular agenda, Saint Lucy County, Florida, taxable sales tax revenue notes. I believe, Mr. McIntyre, you'll take this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. In two thousand thirteen, the county issued some sales tax bonds and sales tax refunding bonds to refund prior debt. Our county's financial advisor, PFM Financial Advisors, have indicated that the county can achieve substantial debt service savings by advance refunding these two thousand and thirteen bonds. At, at the request of the board, the financial advisor advertised an RFP, and we, the county received thirteen responses. Based on a review of the responses by the, the county's financial advisor, they are recommending TD Bank as the loan provider, based on the fixed interest rates and acceptable terms and conditions. The financial advisor indicates that the county should receive at least two-point-four million dollars as a net present value debt service savings, and if these bonds are converted down the road to tax-exempt, it could go up to three-point-one million. These funds, the savings, will be realized in the general fund. In that regard, staff recommends, based on the recommendation of the financial advisor, that the board approve the attached resolution authorizing the issuance of a taxable refunding revenue note, series two thousand twenty-two A and B, and authorization for the chair to sign the documents as approved by the county attorney. We also recommend that the board approve the county's financial advisor's recommendation to award the proposal to finance these notes to TD Bank, N.A.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
With approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Bartz. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to B, Planning and Development Services. This is a targeted industry, and this is the F and L Blue Field Preserve Solar Energy.
Mr. Chair, we, we just got the economic development ad valorem tax exemption.
Okay.
Right. And I'll handle that.
I think I was going to introduce the subject and then turn it over to Mr. Satterley. Basically, this is a proposed resolution that if adopted would put a ballot question in front of the voters in November of twenty-two for the economic ad valorem. We've done this previously in nineteen ninety-two, two thousand and two, and two thousand and twelve, and at this point, Mr. Satterley will brief the board on the progress we've made in the last ten years as a result of the exemption.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Mark Satterley, Deputy County Administrator. As Dan said, you know, this is, this is the fourth time that this would be authorized. It's, it's for ten years. It's a, a program that we've used very successfully over the years in our, and, and really successfully in the last five years within our partnership with the Economic Development Council of Saint Lucy County. It's permitted under Florida statute. It's also in our code of ordinance, and we're just seeking today authorization to put it on the ballot in November. You know, basic questions, what is the exemption and why? If you were a citizen of Saint Lucy County, why would you support it? Next slide, please. There we go. If the program is one of our suite of incentives to attract new businesses and help existing businesses expand, the exemption is temporarily usually for a period of up to ten years, and it's one-hundred percent performance-based. You, you don't get the exemption until you have done the work as promised. Usually, it's, you know, a significant investment, a capital investment in, in, in a project, and it helps our local tax base because even though we forego taxes for a brief period of time, obviously, the, the direct, indirect, and induced activity that happens in the county ends up accruing to the, to the county. And like I said, it's one of our suite of county's economic development toolbox, along with our business navigator expedited permitting, our impact fee credits, and our job growth investment grants. And the only taxes that are exempted under this program are the county's ad valorem taxes and our MSTUs. School taxes, other special districts are not exempted. So it's, it's just, it's just the county's general fund and our MSTU. So in the, in the last, in the last ten years, we've done eight or ten exemptions. You can see that, you know, recently, the Builders First Source created a hundred and thirty-seven new jobs. Their exemption was, you know, for one year was twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, and that's just the foregone ad valorem tax revenue. City Electric, a little larger exemption. Those exemptions extend out several years and then going back into the early years, two thousand twelve, two thousand fourteen, Cabinet Connection, Lighthouse, J.J. Taylor, and Tropicana. So over that period of time, we've created about a thousand twenty new jobs just related to the sales tax exemption. I think, you know, in Pete Tessa's report, and I want to thank Pete for being here today, the report that Pete gave to the board several months ago, talking about the economic development activity, I think we've created, you know, more than five thousand jobs is my recollection in that period of time. So this is just related to the sales tax exemption, but what it shows is that we create new jobs and we retain, we retain, retain jobs as well.
Mr. Chair, I just need to correct you. It's not the sales tax exemption, it's the ad valorem tax exemption.
Right, you're, you're, ad valorem tax, pardon me.
That's all right. I'll make sure to put it in.
So this is just the language, the language that would be put on the ballot. It's, it's pretty. So over that period of time, we've created about a thousand twenty new jobs just related to the sales tax exemption. I think, you know, in Pete Tessa's report, and I want to thank Pete for being here today, the report that Pete gave to the Board several months ago, talking about the economic development activity, I think we've created, you know, more than five thousand jobs is my recollection in that period of time. So this is just related to, um, the sales tax exemption. But what it shows is that we create new jobs and we retain, we retain, retain jobs as well.
Mr. Chair, I just need to correct you. It's not the sales tax exemption, it's the ad valorem tax exemption.
Right, yeah, you're, ad valorem tax, pardon me.
That's all right. I'll make sure to put it in.
Um, so this is just the language, the language that would be put on the ballot. It's, it's pretty explicit in the statute that it's, you can't vary very far from this. But it just says, shall the Board of County Commissioners of this county be authorized to grant pursuant to Section Three, Article Seven of the State Constitution, property tax exemptions to new businesses and expansions of existing businesses that are expected to create and, or expand new jobs? And it's, uh, staff recommendation that we be authorized to place it on the November ballot. And we will be initiating an education campaign, um, for, you know, for the different groups. Hopefully be working with the realtors who can do advocacy. But as, uh, per, per the, uh, the county can only do education.
Okay, there, we have a recommendation from staff. Any questions or any discussion?
No, I just want to reflect that, uh, Port St. Lucie recently, uh, was successful in doing this substantially, uh, by the citizens of Port St. Lucie. And, uh, as we can see, the, uh, the, the proof is in the pudding, so to speak, and, uh, has worked very well in letting us compete around the state and probably around the nation. So it's important to job creation in St. Lucie County.
Thank you, Chris. Now, there is no formal vote necessary, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, no, we would want to vote, vote at the Board.
May of approval.
We have a motion by Commissioners Zazowski. We have a second by Commissioner Bart. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to announcements.
Nope.
How was my calendar?
We have the, um, Blue Field Preserve Solar Energy.
Okay, they switched them, okay. This is the F P N L Blue Field Preserve Solar Energy. And again, this is a targeted industry. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Jody.
Good morning, Chair Mitchell and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Jody Kukler with Planning and Development Services, presenting F P N L Blue Field and Solar Energy Center. This is a targeted industry within St. Lucie County. The applicant, Porter Plower and Light, is seeking a major site plan approval to construct and operate a seventy four point five megawatt photovoltaic solar center. This is an aerial showing the subject property outlined in red. The subject, four hundred and fifty one point eighty six acre property is located at one four six nine seven East Center Street, approximately three point five miles south of, south of State Road seventy and one mile east of Southeast one hundred and twenty eighth Street Avenue in unincorporated St. Lucie County. The property is located within the A G five zoning district and is consistent with the A G five future land use designation. The subject site is located outside the urban service boundary pursuant to Section three point zero one point zero three point C seven zero of the Land Development Code. Solar generation stations are subject to requirements of a conditional use within the A G five zoning district. However, with the passage of Senate Bill eight ninety six on July first, two thou, twenty twenty one, a solar facility shall be permitted use within agricultural land use categories in a local government comprehensive plan in agricultural zoning districts within the unincorporated area and must comply with setbacks and landscape buffers and criteria for other similar uses within the agricultural district. This is the overall site plan showing the site. Access to the site will be obtained along Center Street, which is a platted paved road located within Okeechobee County. This is an unmanned gated facility with security lighting around the substation control building. As part of the major site plan approval, the applicant is requesting two waivers from the Land Development Code. The first waiver is for a maximum ten percent lot coverage by structure. The panels cover a large portion of the property. However, at the lowest point, the solar panels sit approximately two feet off the ground and will not impede the surrounding previous areas. The second waiver is the perimeter landscaping and screening requirements. The Environmental Resources Department supports these waivers based upon the remote site and location of potential shading conflicts. Staff has determined the major site plan meets the standards of review outlined in the, in Section eleven point zero two point zero seven and is consistent with the goals, objectives and policies of the comprehensive plan. Therefore, staff recommends the Board of County Commissioners approve the, this petition subject to the conditions set forth in Resolution twenty twenty two dash thirty one. This concludes my presentation. We do have Mr. Long with Gunster Law Firm that will be doing a present, short presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question of staff real quick?
Sure.
Um, I don't know if this is a question for you, Jody, or for my tire bin or somebody, but when are we going to be updating to, so that this can reflect moving forward? We need to update a lot of our text amendments and a lot of the stuff to the comp plans because of changes. Do you know when staff is going to be looking at updating like this in particular and a couple of other things?
Commissioner Mitchell, Chair, uh, Commissioner Townsend, we are bringing the permission to advertise on March fifteenth.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of Jody?
Um, just, just one, there's only an ex, I mean, a entry plate, uh, to this coming from Okeechobee. Has there been, um, uh, Okeechobee been notified from mutual aid? Should there be any kind of fire scenario that occurred as, has happened at one, uh, location? Simply because our fire district can't, would have some difficulty trying to get there from where they are at Station Seven.
Uh, yes, uh, Commissioner, I mean Chair, uh, Mitchell and Commissioners Zazowski. Yes, we have, they have notified the Public Services Director and the Fire Department out in Okeechobee. They will be the first respondents to this site.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, good question. Any other questions? Thank you, Jody. Good morning.
Good morning, uh, for the record, Josh Long, A I C P Certified Planner with the Gunster Law Firm on behalf of Florida Power and Light. Jody did a great job with the presentation. I don't think I need to add much more than that. Um, just want to say that I do, um, agree with staff's interpretation that we do meet all the standards for approval for the, the major site plan and the waivers. Chris Fries with F P L is here, he's gonna give you an overview of the project and an update on F P L's solar program. Someone let him go through the slide presentation. Our entire team is here. Um, if you have any questions on anything, we're here to answer anything you have after that. Thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thanks, Josh. Good morning, everyone. Uh, thanks for having us this morning. I'll, I'll keep it short and sweet. I know you guys have seen, uh, quite a few of these solar projects, but we always like to get in front of, of y'all and, and the public as well just to, to tell our story a little bit and answer any questions you may have with the Solar Energy Center. Uh, again, my name's Chris Fries. I'm Project Director with F P L, uh, and the development team. And, uh, we're here to talk about, uh, Blue Field Preserve Solar Energy Center, so. F P L, you know, our main mission, our main goal is to be a clean, reliable and affordable, uh, energy provider for all of those that are in the F P L service territory. Uh, so those are kind of the three major pillars of, of our mission. Uh, you've probably seen a lot of the coal retirement recently, some, some demolition of coal plants. Obviously, solar energy centers like this one coming on, uh, just make the, the grid cleaner and cleaner. Uh, hopefully, most people can positively attest to the reliability and affordability of, of F P L. So, uh, hopefully, we're, we're maintaining our, our, our mission on those two. Uh, but, you know, then again, this is, this is kind of building towards that mission, right? Blue Field Preserve is just the next step towards that mission and we thank you for, for being part of that. Next slide, please. Uh, this, this is kind of a cool slide for our team, at least our F P L development team. Last year, we were in front of you, uh, folks with Sundu Solar Energy Center. And, uh, the slide, just about, I guess it was April of last year, it said thirty seven, had thirty seven solar energy centers. So, uh, today, we're, we're proud to, to say we've just hit the fifty mark at the end of, uh, January. So we have fifty solar sites, uh, throughout the entire state, all the way up through the panhandle there. So, uh, you know, five of those, this would be the fifth within St. Lucie County, but, uh, you know, we are proud of that number of fifty. Just recently reached that. Sundu, uh, in St. Lucie County just recently was commissioned the end of January. So it's, it's one of the most recent additions to the list, so, uh, something to be very proud of. Next slide, please. Uh, here, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of words on this slide, but, you know, I think, I think most people, especially y'all up here, uh, understand, you know, local engineers, scientists, surveyors, planners, uh, most of which are sitting back here, definitely appreciate their help and their expertise uh, in getting all these, all these documents together and all the designs together. Uh, obviously, the jobs that are associated with this, whether they're local or, uh, folks coming in that, that utilize, you know, gas stations, restaurants, hotels, they always bring a nice injection of, of money into the company, into the, into the county. Uh, obviously, the tax revenue, but we also have projects within Indian River State College as far as partnerships with training. Uh, we're still honing that, that relationship with them. Uh, it's a great opportunity, uh, to work with Indian River State College on that, so. Plenty of, I'm not gonna go into all of them here, but, you know, uh, you can see those, there's, there's lots of benefits for the county. Uh, jobs, funding, you know, uh, training programs with State College. So we're proud to, we're proud to, um, tie in with all those, those aspects of it, so. Next slide, please. Uh, here's just a little bit testament about, you know, us trying to be great neighbors, uh, with folks. You know, here's, the magic numbers we'd like to talk about each solar energy center, uh, basically provides power for essentially fifteen thousand uh, average residential homes and takes the equivalent of fourteen thousand cars off the road from a mission standpoint. So, uh, really proud of those numbers, but we, we are also pride ourselves in being great neighbors, being a quiet neighbor, no lights, very little traffic once it's operational, uh, those kind of things. We are looking into doing farm fencing, uh, we are, we, that is part of this project, just to be more ingrained with, with the local neighborhoods there. So we always take pride in being a great neighbor out there and always, always trying to, to enhance that and, and increase it and make it better, so. And I think most of the other slides, uh, Jody still are thunder on. Uh, this might be the only one we talk about, but, uh, you know, Blue Field Preserve Solar out there in the southwest corner of St. Lucie County, kind of close to, to the Sundu Lagerhead area, but, um, this kind of just shows where Blue Field Preserve lays out with, with the other solar centers in, in St. Lucie County. And I think, uh, like, we'll go into this a little bit about the timeline. Uh, Jody went into the, to the mapping aspect of this, but this is a so, seventy four point five megawatt solar site consistent with the other solar sites in St. Lucie County. Total area developed, four hundred and fifty two acres. There's existing transmission line that goes over that, that previous pasture area, so, uh, there's no major interconnection, construction opportunities with this site. The ma, the major site plan was submitted in September of last year. We did receive our, uh, Florida Department of Environmental Protection E R P, the Environmental Resource Permit. We received that in November of last year. Uh, here we are today, seeking B O C C approval. Uh, proposed construction start date in April of this year with a proposed in-service date in Q one of next year. And Jody went through most of the rest on here. I think at this point, we can open up to questions or any, any comments?
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
So when this field goes in, does that mean that St. Lucie County will have the most solar in the county out of all sixty?
Now you're stumping me. I know, you guys are definitely up there, I know, I don't know.
Are we gonna be number one when this takes effect?
Are they number one, Matt, you know? I think we're. Yeah, we're working on that. I think, I think one or two more and I think you're definitely up there with, with the gold medal, so.
Okay, well, I'm waiting on the gold medal. Now, y'all been great partners.
Any other questions? Thank you so much. Go ahead.
Give you the opportunity to be in front of the public, you want to talk about your Interstate Education Center, uh, that you, uh, opened up with the Interstate, uh, Solar Group?
Yeah, the Interstate, I, I don't know all the details for that, but I know at that Interstate Solar Center, we did, we did build, uh, some nice training, you know, commercial, uh, structure there so we can do items such as the training. I don't have the details on that necessarily. Uh, that's another, uh, team within F P L, but, uh, we could certainly line up some information on that, uh, for the county, uh, provide that at a later date if that works.
I'm sure folks can look at your website and find it.
Yes, yes. Yeah, if you go to the F P L dot com website, we should have some information on that, but, uh, we'd love to put, put some together for you if, 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 uh, you guys want that, that'd be great.
And I want to thank you for recognizing Jody because she is a rock star.
Yes, yes, Jody has been a pivotal, a pivotal part of this.
She's one of the best and, and not most people recognize our staff in doing so, so thank you for doing that.
No, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Townsend, second by Commissioner Bart. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And next, we have a administrative update from our new P D S Director. With Maite Santa Maria is my good friend and colleague. How are you, my friend?
Doing well.
One second.
I just want to say welcome, Maite. Excited that you're here.
Uh, good morning, Chairman Mitchell and Commissioners, Ben Ballser, Assistant Planning and Development Services Director for the record. I'm joined with my, by Maite Sanz Maria, our brand new Planning and Development Services Director. Our first day was yesterday. Um, it's our pleasure to present, um, this month's, uh, administrative approval update for you all. Uh, these are administrative approvals that happened in January. We have two for you this morning. Uh, first up, we have a minor adjustment to the major site plan for the Maverick Boat Facility located off of St. Lucie Boulevard. Uh, this expansion included a seventeen thousand square foot internal mezzanine within the hundred and six thousand expansion that is currently under construction. It also included enclosed six thousand square feet, uh, covered rear overhang for storage, uh, truck wells for off-street loading and an associated fifteen hundred square foot covered canopy for the east loading dock and a four hundred and eighty square foot electrical building. Chris McCrain was the project planner for this expansion of a targeted industry. Uh, the next project we have is a minor adjustment to the minor site plan, allowing Hillcrest Memorial Gardens to construct a fifteen foot tall, nine hundred square foot mausoleum. This is similar to the existing mausoleums on the existing cemetery and it is located between North U S Highway One and Old Dixie Boulevard. Tahir Curry was the project manager for this development approval. And that's what we have for you this month.
Any other questions? Any questions for staff?
Welcome, Maite. We missed you.
Welcome and thank you for having me. It's a pleasure to serve this county again.
It's a pleasure to have you back.
It sure is.
Okay, there's no questions. We'll move on to, uh, Mr. Jefferson, will you be leading us in the announcements?
Yes, Chair, thank you. We have several announcements today, um, Chair. We, uh, we wanted to make sure that we include several different themes on the agenda so that we can provide announcements to the residents. Um, St. Lucie County's Upper Mobility Cohort, uh, Community Engagement Open House at the Finn Center is on Friday, February eighteen, from two to six, six P M. So we invite people out to that particular, um, um, Community Engagement Open House. Uh, the St. Lucie County, um, Commissioners and, um, Environmental Resources Department will host a ribbon cutting for the new thirty five acre Patrice Weiss Preserve at five four four five Palmeau Avenue, Fort Pierce on Monday, February twenty first at noon. Um, also wanted to make, uh, residents and the Board aware of, uh, Community Culture Arts and Health Awareness Day on February twenty sixth at the Lincoln Park Community Center, um, that's in Fort Pierce from eleven A M to three P M. County offices will be closed on Monday, February twenty first, in observance of President's Day. The Board of County Commissioners will also hold a special meeting on Tuesday, February twenty second at nine A M in this commission chambers, um, uh, located at the same location. The Annual St. Lucie County Fair begins on Friday, February twenty fifth through Sunday, March sixth at fifteen six zero one West Midway Road, Fort Pierce. Um, ticket information can be found online at W W W dot St. Lucie County Fair dot org. And Chair, we're hopeful that there will be a spring training this year, um, starting up. Um, so hopefully, right now is tentative for February twenty seventh. We are continuing to monitor that and, and get updated information. And hopefully, we'll be able to assist team home games as part of the schedule. So we'll keep, keep the Board and, um, our community updated on that. Um, and that's all the announcements we have.
Commissioner Townsend, you want to say a word?
Um, yeah, what is the special meeting on for the public?
Um, the special meeting is regarding, um, the impact fees on, um, um, parks, libraries and buildings.
Okay, thank you. And also, um, Mr. Chair, I have a couple of things I'd like to, um, ask the Board. The first thing is, um, Ms., also Alfonso, um, we don't have a date yet, but we are going to be looking at having an open house to address the community on the homeless shelter. That date's to be determined, but that's also forthcoming.
We're hoping to release a date today.
Okay.
Um, and the location and the timeframe, so we're trying to finalize that today.
Okay, thank you. The one thing, I have, I have two things, actually, I would like to ask the Board. The first thing is, um, the commercial dumpsters. Um, there is an issue going on with several of the restaurants in this area and some of the plazas. And so I'd like to have conversation at an informal meeting to come back to us to discuss, I think, that as a business and you're paying for a service, it's not a part of your tax bill, that a business should be able to use whatever garbage, um, company they want to use for the dumpsters. You know, there's a serious issue going on South County. There's several strip centers up that way that I've had conversations with, as well as a couple of North County. And so I think it's time to have a conversation to let the businesses decide on who they want to pick up their garbage with their dumpsters.
I brought up that question also, we can put it on an informal. We can put it on an informal, just be cognizant of the fact that if we do that, then the residents, their taxes will go up for them.
Well, and I understand that, that their garbage service could go up, but there needs to be some accountability because the dumpsters are not being dumped properly, and the restaurants are going to be cited by the Health Department because there's food in those dumpsters, which is creating rats and everything else, and it's not fair to the restaurants to be penalized because their garbage isn't being dumped. So it's time to have that conversation. The other thing I want to have conversation in the future is about an additional homestead exemption for this county and moving forward to residents that have been here for twenty-five years or more. I think it's time that we can give back to the people that have made this their home for a long time, and we need to consider having an additional homestead exemption. We have that for first responders and over sixty-five, and so I'd like to engage in some conversation about possibly bringing in a homestead exemption for the residents that have been a resident and had a homestead and lived in their homes for twenty-five years or longer. So I don't know if that's a conversation. I need to start with Mr. McIntyre before we bring it back. Yeah, so, but I want to have that conversation. So, Mr. McIntyre, if I need to start with you, that would be great, before we come back to the board with it.
Yes, we can, we can, we can do that and present it at an informal if the board is interested in doing that.
Thank you. Anything else? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
We'll come to order Saint Lucie County Erosion District. First on the agenda is general public comment. Seeing no one, we'll move to the approval of the minutes of January twenty-fifth.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Mitchell and seconded by Commissioner Bartz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Today, we have a consent agenda with two items. If there's no discussion, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bartz, seconded by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. There's no regular agenda, but I would like to let the board be aware. Yesterday, I had the pleasure of being with Josh along with Mark Satterley in Army Corps down on South Hutch for the pre-construction meeting for the future renourishment program. And I'm happy to say that it looks like it begins, correct me, Josh, I think there was a discussion on dates, the end of March, middle of March, give or take a couple days, and they should be done and complete. Hopefully, their window is to be off the beach by April thirtieth, so May first, expect an invitation to a party. This is twenty years plus in the making.
Thank you for your hard work.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
We'll call together the Mosquito Control District Agenda for regular meeting Tuesday, February fifteenth. Do we have any general public comment? Any general public comment? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, general comment under mosquito control. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Mosquito Code District of January twenty-fifth, a motion by Commissioner Bartz, seconded by Commissioner Townsend. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
On the consent agenda, we have warrants list fifteen, sixteen through eighteen. We have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hutchinson, seconded by Commissioner Bartz. All those in favor signify by saying aye. There are no regular items scheduled for the regular agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
And now we're on to the Sustainability District. I'll open the meeting for public comment. Seeing no one, I will close public comment. Next item is the approval of the minutes for November sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one, and a second for November sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one. One was a reorg. I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We have nothing on the consent, no items on the regular agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Agreed.
Thank you.
We'll come together as the Environmental Control Board. First item is public comment. Ms. Marjorie, come on, get your, you missed, you got to come over here and...
Is she talking environmental?
Doesn't matter. Wanted to give you a chance because it was your last chance for day. I know you were a little bit behind.
I just want to say, Ms. Alfonso, you fantastic.
Good, thank you. I guess we'll keep them.
You have a job for another month.
Thank you. All right. No other further public comment? We'll close public comment. Next item, approval of minutes for November sixteenth, and then as the Environmental Control District reorg, and then followed by the district meeting of also November sixteenth.
Move approval.
We have a motion approved by Mitchell, seconded by Bartz. Any comments or questions on the item? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
No further business today? Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Thank you.